Good morning, I'll call the meeting order, would you please, all right, for the French Legions. Jody, I believe you're first on the agenda, on the transfers.
No, this is brilliant, this is great.
Good.
Yeah, it is.
Done a good job. I'm trying to be as detailed without overwhelming.
Yes.
As possible. So, yeah, the first table shows where we want to move the money into, the second table shows where it's currently being held, and then the little synopsis of the explanations match up to those item numbers. So, I don't know if you need to take one by one, or?
One motion, the damages that were done, and maybe Todd, Billy, you can, do we get reimbursed by the inmates for that?
That's what this is.
That's what I saw.
This is restitution for those damages.
Good.
If there's criminal charges filed, it goes along with the criminal case.
Okay.
Sometimes it takes years to get the money, and some of these were from 2017.
Is this just a change in the way that you're gonna report it, or why all of a sudden, are you got all these from this time of time? This is great.
We, we just got a bunch in it at one time.
At once, so it just so happens they all came.
Yeah, and it worked out well to do it this way, instead of.
We've never, I don't think we've ever had a presentation like this before, and it's very confusing, so that's why I didn't know if you kept, if you logged it for so long, then are we gonna report it back to us, or is this gonna be?
To a point, yes. Okay, yeah, it was a couple months, but it took a couple months to research some of them.
Yeah.
So.
Well, you're so thorough, there's, you've answered any question you should have. You've done a great job.
All right.
Yeah, I'll motion that we approve all of them. Second, I have a motion by Nick, second by John, that we approve all the transfers. Further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Scott White.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, last time I was here to talk about, I'll be pushing you with this, of the board nomination, that's a little confusing. So, yesterday, the commissioners appointed, reappointed six of the existing seven board members. They did not appoint Amy Sadler. She would be the remaining person that you could nominate today for help board, or anybody else. Again, we can't have more than four people of the same political party. The commissioners did nominate four individuals from the Republican Party yesterday, two Democrats. Wish to reappoint Amy Sadler, who just came on this year, to the board, that'd be great. If not, you can certainly, under statute, choose anybody else, would be a different power.
Will the term remain the same, or are we starting over?
Elections are usually January, so since they've all been the same, they'll probably vote to keep the same things. There won't happen to be one on this, or October, so. I will let you know that Dr. Gilliam does have cancer again, so I don't know if he will remain in this issue. Any questions?
So, you need a motion for Amy?
That'd be great, if you'd like to do that, yes.
I mean, that's your suggestion, I don't know.
Yeah, she's, she's obviously a medical doctor here, goes in Woodley County, she's been great so far, so.
I make a motion to put Amy on the Health Department Board.
I second.
Got a motion by Tom, a second by Joan, that we appoint Amy Sadler on the, that's our appointee on the Board of Health. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Okay, Brad Allen was next, but I believe he's ill. So, Dave, you wanna?
I think you'll receive the email. This is the funds that Amy came in to discuss with you about this bill that had happened. He just would like to appropriate those into his actual line items. Two dollar amounts there, you've got the fifty-six oh five for travel and mileage, and the nine sixty-six nineteen for the overtime. Just asking permission for those to be put back into his budget.
Motion to approve the transfers request. Motion by Thor.
I'll second.
Second by Nick, that we put these, these figures back in for fuel and overtime back into his budget. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same, show that you didn't have a smooth.
Too long.
No, I just scratch it.
Okay, Ryan. Welcome.
Thank you, good morning.
Morning.
Brian Getz, Woodley County Highway Department, the Director, here to ask for additional appropriations to cover calcium chloride application that has already been done, that was not in the budget for 2023. I'm not sure why it was removed from the budget, but it's been done, and we need roughly eight thousand dollars to cover those expenses.
And I will say, this is kind of just a discussion beforehand, so it won't be advertised until next, because there wasn't enough time.
So, do we have a place we can transfer that money to him now, to pay for that?
It won't be a transfer, it'd be an additional.
An additional, and how much was it, Ryan?
Eighty thousand. And I will say, those funds are, are there, and we don't know why it was removed from the budget, but the commissioners disagreed with that, we wanted it back in.
When you say the funds are there, are they the funds that were assigned to that, and just tell?
Funds are in the budget, they just were never appropriated.
I agree, it should be applied.
We know why it was removed.
Previous director had decided to not do it.
Save some funds.
We can't vote on that now.
Yeah, I'll have the form for you to sign.
Okay.
And all consensus, we'll see you next time.
Yep.
See you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clark?
Good morning, council members. For those of you that don't know, my name is Debbie Beers, I'm Chief Deputy, I'm here on behalf of Cindy Duke Little, she's the clerk of court, she's on vacation. So, she has told me that she has given all of you a letter explaining why I'm here. I'm requesting this ticket on behalf of our voter registration election supervisor, Jessica Hochmeyer. Reason for that being, according to the letter here, it will show you, our vendor for election is Microvote, they have been our vendor for a very long time, they're absolutely amazing. But, we have a way that we can continue to help save taxpayers' money on the election, and quite a bit of money, as you can see here by the letter. What Jessica can perform, is she can, she can work on our, and program our machines for the election. Now, I am also to tell you that we are having an election for Larwell this year, and also for South Woodley, which is a little bit different with Larwell, but there will be two small town elections added to the city election. So, that'll add some more work also. The stipend that we're requesting for Jessica, seven hundred and fifty dollars. You see here, also, Microvote will verify what she programs in the machines, for seven hundred and fifty dollars, and then we have to have a public test, which is law, that's seven hundred dollars, that Microvote comes and performs for us. That is a total cost of two thousand two hundred dollars. If we had Microvote provide all of that, it would cost us six thousand six hundred dollars. So, we have a savings here, quite a bit of savings from the county. So, I am here on behalf of asking for that stipend.
Questions?
No, I think we're just very fortunate that we have Jessica within our team.
We are, we are, Jessica is amazing, Cindy's amazing, they do a wonderful job for the voters of this county.
So, my only question is, when the Microvote, would, if we do away with them on part of this, is, do they supply any legal help if, if something goes on?
Yes.
Even if we take Jessica on?
Right, and that's, and what?
On that?
Yes, good question. And Microvote, what they'll do, is part of what we're paying them, is what Jessica does, then they oversee it, make sure that everything is correct. So, yes.
Okay, that was my concern, if we didn't want to, if there was something off, but I didn't want to lose that.
And there's no friction with them, as far as?
Not at all.
Taking care of this part.
Oh, no, they're amazing, and matter of fact, I'll just put a bug in your ear, they've asked Jessica to come work for them several times. So, that's how amazing she is.
Great.
We'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll start it. Motion by Thor, second by Tom, that we, we approved the, the request on the stipends, total amount, twenty-two hundred dollars. Further discussion? Ask for the vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna change our agenda just a little bit here, and ask Dale Book, come up.
Good morning, Dale Book, Woodley County Economic Development, thank you very much, this is a late request, and I appreciate council hearing it. This would be a resolution, twenty twenty-three, for basic tax abatement. Really neat, and encouraging investment happening in Larwell by Red Star. The county had made an investment some time ago to do a sewer extension out there to allow for this expansion that's now taking place. This expansion's considerable. As you saw in the memo, quite a few jobs, well-paying jobs, higher than the county average. And what I would like to do before formally requesting it, and talking a little bit more about it, is to introduce Mike Milligan, who's the Chief Accounting Officer, he's gonna describe a little bit about what's going on, and also, we're fortunate to have Scott Worsler back involved with Red Star, which, which is a good thing, as he was there in the beginning, and now he's back as a consultant. So, Mike, if you could just kind of come up and explain the project, and also, if you could just remind us, and Scott, what Red Star does, and what the future looks like.
Yeah. What you could go for the intro, Red Star. Yeah, we're a medical device contract manufacturer, and the thing I really wanna distress is, we don't just steal jobs from Warsaw, orthopedics is a big, a big part of our business. Our background's injection molding and clean room, single-use packaging, so our largest customer's in Texas, and then that customer has exploded. Ortho industry, the orders aren't big enough for me, you get a hundred of this, fifty of that, we're, we're wanting the mold parts we're making, and when I left, I think it was ten thousand pieces a month, and now we're at probably thirty thousand, with plans to go even higher, so, there, I guess we're not robbing from our neighbor, we're, we're bringing stuff in from other places, this is kind of. Yeah, so the expansion will be twenty-four thousand square foot facility to the south of our current footprint, gonna be adding fifty new jobs on top of the forty-five that we had already added from the last abatement, so we've just, we've exploded with growth, we're bursting at the seams, we've got professionals kind of stacked on top of each other in offices, we've got people bumping into each other on the floor, we've got supplies kind of stacked, you know, there are walkways, we're having to kind of do a side step around to get through, it's a good problem to have, right, we're growing crazy, but we, we need, you know, we need this abatement to make this happen. Our private equity group that's funded us has committed to another four billion investment, but they're also counting on, on the abatement to be part of, part of the deal, so that's, that's why we're, we're here today, and open any questions.
Well, I can tell you, I'm glad to have you in Woodley County, also glad you're in Larwell to start with. I know I go by there quite a bit, see the improvements that you guys are making, and really, it's, really happy that you got a plan on staying there and with this investment, that means you're gonna even stay longer, so I'm glad to have, so I think I can say.
We're glad to be there.
When we looked at extending the sewer, and that, and we have bigger dreams for that area of Larwell, and that, and that's one reason that the sewer was put in, and, and so forth, and watched it grow, and I watched that parking lot fill up, and get stuffed with cars, and that's always a good feeling, and then so.
From the neighbor, Mark's footprint, this is ground to have more parking.
Right, I, I saw that here across the road, and that, and they did buy some additional ground to the south where this is going, so, so this is welcomed expansion, and that, and we wish you well.
Yeah, so the resolution is request for ten-year phased-in max payment on both the real and the personal property investment, and they have complied, they filled out the SB ones, and there are also, the state of Indiana is gonna help out also with some edge tax credits for this, so that's the request.
If so, if we so approve this, resolution number would be two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen.
I make a motion that we approve the tax abatement for Red Star, twenty twenty-three dash thirteen.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Kim, a second from Joan, that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, tax abatement for Red Star, approximately six million in, in improvements, and fifty jobs, additional jobs. Any further discussion? Questions? I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of approving the resolution, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same.
Thank you.
Passes again.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
So, the next part on here is gonna be, you're looking at your taxing units, and see if you have any recommendations or changes for their levies, or their circuit breaker credit, it's kind of a standard thing you might do every year. It's up to you how you choose to move forward.
On the sweep you have, you notice that we, the general, gets about seventy-two percent. Reassessment, about one percent, because we, we have dropped them, about a hundred thousand. Community services, twenty-four thousand. Hume Bridge, about one point two million, roughly. Health Department, a little over five hundred thousand. County four-H, about twenty-four thousand. CCD, about three hundred and twenty thousand. That's about seven point eight, is what it's proposed for two thousand twenty-four. Any additional comments on that, yep?
No, just I'll read this.
So, what's your pleasure on this? We saw the twenty-three figures here.
Like, like last year and the prior, it was, no recommendations were made by council, so there was no changes. Not sure how you want to report for twenty-four.
So, if we don't make any recommendations, it'll just basically?
How the units have them, yes.
Guess we're comfortable with these, we can leave them the same? Or we're gonna have a motion to leave them the same?
I think they're not the same, Mike, all, I think.
Yep.
We usually make a motion, because I have to send the minutes to all the units to let them know that you're making the recommendations or changes.
I'll make a motion that we leave the levy the same.
I'll second it.
Motion by Joan, second by Kim, that we leave it the same, levy. Discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same. Okay.
And Nick, did you help?
I didn't.
Okay, so I wanna make sure.
All those opposed to say? Okay. Commissioners report, Chad?
I'm, I'll start with, yesterday, we accepted the DNR grant, we've been talking about that DNR grant for the museum for some time, that was fifty thousand, and it was a fifty percent matching grant, and those funds were already budgeted and approved, fifty thousand just applied to what was already been approved, so we're glad about that. We awarded the community crossings grant to EMB paving, so that's behind us, and they'll start work very, very soon. Yesterday, we approved agreements or contracts with Baker Tilly, Jabs, and Peterson Consulting, so the Peterson Consulting is the asset management for the auditor's office. Jabs is that court system, the audiovisual system that they use in the courts, which the, the two courts budget for and pay on their budgets, and the Baker Tilly agreement was similar to last year, where they come alongside the auditor's office, and she can use them as a resource during budget and beyond. If necessary, yeah. And that's just at an hourly rate, so if we don't use them, we don't pay for it, and if we do, then we just pay the hourly rate. We also got a letter from the Attorney General Office about our awards for the opioid settlement for this upcoming year, so I'll just let you know, there's gonna be a distribution of twenty-six thousand one hundred four dollars and seventy-five cents, and restricted, and eight thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents, and unrestricted for opioid settlement. And also, yesterday, the commissioners approved, moving forward with land appraisal, we've been talking about this additional entrance to jail, and if we could acquire land for that, just being forward thinking for down the road, so commissioners did approve the land appraisal, and we will price shop and then come back to council. Also, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to make it to the budget meeting on Thursday, I heard there was a lot of discussion about the bond renewal, and that there was a hope that we would discuss that publicly, and so, I just wanna afford you all an opportunity, if you wanna discuss bond renewal, the bond on this building falls off, our last payment is either toward the end of this year, or early next year, it's February, so, you know, I heard that there's a lot of discussion, so I just wanted to open it up.
Chad, would you please just start off by educating everybody on what that means, what you're saying, what the bond is supposed to put in place for, and what's it mean by renew?
So, to build this building, there was a referendum, and it was a property tax, so when it was, when it was approved, when the tax was approved, it was, it was meant to be used to pay for this building. I mean, the purpose of that referendum was to pay for this building, so the, the money that's being received makes the bond payments, and then, of course, if, and when the bond is paid off, then those property tax rates go back to what they once were. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but then, why would we want to? What would be the advantage of renewing the bond?
Well, you can renew the bond and keep the tax rates the same. You still have to pay the renewed bond, you still have to make bond payments, or, or loan payments toward your new bond, but you keep those tax rates the same, and then those funds can be used for something else.
So, Chad, if I understand this right, if we drop the bond, we lose that tax rate, falls back. Let's just say, for an example, we wanna put another bond sometime, that tax rate could be even higher than the rate that we tax, so we have now.
I think it just depends on the, the amount of the bond.
What is our rate, do you know?
But the rate that we're paying on that bond, if it's not a locked rate, it was a variable rate, is that correct?
No, it was locked.
It was locked rate?
Yeah.
So, if we renew the bond, though, it's not gonna be at that same rate?
No, it's gonna be at the third cost of bond. I, the bond, we were paying about five hundred thousand a year, is that correct, Tiffany? And this, we have one last payment of about two hundred and fifty-five thousand in February. Baker Tilly has advised us, or, or suggests that we renew that bond if we have projects and so forth, and I believe we do have those projects, and I had come up with some, talking with Mark, and on our buildings that are gonna need work, if, if we buy the, having to buy the second entrance, we could use it there, but it, that, that would be a longer-term bond, which is normally used for longer-term projects, much like we do when we buy our houses, or build them, or, or when companies do a major improvement, like Red Star, who just, just left, their, their financing is gonna be spread out, so that we don't use all our cash up in that, plus, the taxpayers are used to paying that amount, so they're not gonna see a decline, and then, like Kim said, if we have a project, and then, then a bigger increase, and that, and it's been Baker Tilly's feeling the last two years, that they knew this was gonna roll off, that we do try to keep that bond intact, and it doesn't have to be the original amount of it, it's, it can be, I, I believe, two to six million, but I think we've got enough long-term projects that it would warrant that, and then, if you do that, then you protect your cash. The only time you, you buy things with cash is if you're heavy cash rate, so you don't take a chance of using your cash, or hurt your cash flow, and historically, that's what you try to do, I believe that's the emphasis that Baker Tilly is trying to make, is that you can keep things pretty steady, I mean, we have the jail going on, this building's eighteen years old, which surprises most people, but it's gonna be needing some work, there's more work to be done to the courthouse, it'd be nice to get that done, and take a pause for a while, and you can set that term up to the amount, and, and what, it can be five, seven, ten, it doesn't have to go out as long as, obviously, this bond was, but it is a nice way to structure improvement, and so forth, so I, I'm one that has always been in favor of taking their recommendation, and, and keeping that in. Recommendation and, and keeping that and, and doing, getting some of these projects done and getting the financing set up properly. We would have to go through, I think it has to be done by the end of the year, I believe, so.
Yeah, I, I completely differ, disagree. I, I think that our cash reserves are the best they've been and I don't even know how long. And I believe responsible government would lean into their cash reserves to pay for these things and keep, keep taxes low. And so I, I think we have an opportunity to get back to the taxpayer at a time where their assessed values are climbing and everyone's property tax is rising. We have, we have a chance here to. Have to provide a little relief and. You know, I, I think that's. That's the premise, that's the, the whole idea about us, you know, we're, we're a Republican majority and, you know, the, the platform clearly states, this is what we do, we keep taxes low. We, we believe in, in limited government and. You know, like I said, we have an opportunity to do the right thing and. And let that tax rate fall back.
You know, I appreciate the opportunity for you to discuss this at a recorded meeting, so it is recorded for everyone to see later. It's a, it's a difficult decision. And the, the way I look at it is, it's hard to make that decision because of dollar amounts we're looking at. For even just the courthouse, you're looking at over $200,000, as Mark says, we need immediately. So then we've got the disposal of the jail or whatever your decision is on that, I don't know what you're going to do. The, the, the repair work that we're looking at is very substantial, so I'm not sure how we would accommodate for those.
Well, we had already previously agreed that we would use arc buff funds for the immediate repairs to courthouse. So, you know, that's, that's already covered.
And that's true. Not knowing if we were going to renew the bond or not.
Yeah. I think we're, the.
How much is it, how much relief, how much relief is there for an average homeowner, what dollar amount?
I don't know, I couldn't tell you, we can certainly look into that, but. To me, it's not about the dollars, it's about the concept, it's about the idea of do something for the taxpayer. Assessed values are high and everyone's.
I understand that, as a taxpayer, I'm looking at how long down the road is it before we're going to be asked to redo another bond at a higher rate? If it's a couple of years, well, we've made a mistake.
And I believe responsible government.
We, we did the right thing, so that's why it's not a light decision to make, we need to really think about it.
Yeah, I believe responsible government would go back to the people at that time and explain why it's needed.
I agree, because that process involves public hearing and public input and. Those are the people that elected us to make those decisions, and honestly, not us to make the decision because it's not a council decision. But that would send the process for that bond back to public input. And then we would know how the taxpayers felt, and I agree that, you know, when this bond was taken out, they were, maybe not verbally, but the promise of. Tax relief, once that bond was paid off, was implied, it was, it was, it was stated and implied that that relief would come at some point. And if we want to do projects, we think that we need to have a bond, and I think that we need to start the process over and, and have the public hearing and the public input brought forward by the public.
As a council. Holding the funds for the county, we need to safeguard our cash funds though, I mean, we need to be aware of that. The, the past council, from my understanding, what Thor has explained over the few months, years I've been here, they worked very hard to get that cash reserve. Because it was quite low, not that long ago. So, you know, we have to consider that, we can't just go in and complete that, especially with the economic times. That we have, we're all hurting in the county. I just, I think we need to make it a slow, wise boat, nothing to rush into, it was not our boat, I understand that.
But I tend to.
I don't, I don't want to spend our cash reserve to where we've got to go to a bank and borrow money, we're not to that point.
That's what you're talking about.
What you're asking us to do is go borrow money and fund the budget or.
Theoretically.
Credit.
I tend to agree with the two of you, one. I'm, I'm kind of split on this, you know, obviously it is your decision, but I think it would be smart governing, like Thor said, to take it back to the public. But two, also. We are going to pay a higher rate just because of where rates are right now. And it may be a better idea to wait and see. In the next six, 12, 18 months, what happens with Fed rates, they're going to go down, it's, I mean, it's inevitable. They're high right now, I think it would be foolish to rebond at a higher rate and pay way more interest on this over the next five to 10 years or however long. I think. You know, if you guys commissioners decide that it's something you want to look at, we, we really need to look at what our interest payments are going to be, because they're going to be way more than what they were 18 years ago. 20 years ago, whenever it was spawned.
There is one thing that we forgot in this discussion is we've got a moving budget to approve that has to have some drastic cuts. We don't make those drastic cuts, you're going to eat into that cash heavily now, so we do have that to look at. Yet this afternoon or today, this morning, so. And we were, you know, the request was 14.1. Our revenue estimate is 13.1, there's a million dollars, not counting raises. And so you could talk 1.3, 1.4 has to be adjusted. And that takes a, a healthy cash balance and weakens it severely if, if we have to be, we have to go into our cash. To do that, so forth, so I just wanted to remind everybody, we have a pretty good task here in the next couple of hours.
Do we have the growth quotient, do we know what the increase is for 2024? 4%? State was at nine?
I mean, not everybody spoke, I, I see, and I agree with you, both sides, I see both sides on it, but, I mean, some of the projects we want to get done now, I can see renewing the bond now. To keep things moving forward, I mean, yeah, hopefully someday the tax rate comes down or the interest rate, I'm not sure when or how long, but. We have opportunity to renew a bond and keep moving forward with what we need to do, but. Your decision, whichever.
Whatever, I just had heard that it was a. Big talking point on Thursday, so. I heard that you were very vocal, Joan, I heard you were very vocal, so I just want to.
I don't feel like I was really. I appreciate the opportunity for us to discuss it.
You know what rate we're currently paying? Is that something you can find out?
Yeah.
Eventually, yeah. And then what rate it could be renewed at, if it is.
You know, it'd be nice to give the taxpayers, and we're all taxpayers, a relief, it would be really nice, but it'd be interesting to find out how much of a relief that is.
I think we owe it to our constituents to figure it out. Jim, I was totally in agreement with you that we need to look at renewing the bond, but, I mean, I. I told you about how much my property taxes were this year and it's absolutely, it's just Tiffany knows too, it's, it's insane how much some are paying in this county for property taxes. We've got to figure it out, I think, without renewing the bond.
Now, you, you saw the list of improvements over the next three to five years or six years here?
I did.
That money has to be come up with or you cannot build it to deteriorate. And that, and.
But let's be realistic, Jim, the buildings aren't going to deteriorate, they're not, they're not going to crumble. You know, some of the projects that I saw on that list were sidewalk projects and I walked those sidewalks and don't really see them being in this repair. Let's be realistic.
I am being very realistic, Chad, so, but we've had a good discussion this morning. I, I would like to see what those are, I'm old enough to understand, I think Kim is and Tom, that property values can go down. And if this interest rate stays up and that, I think we've already seen some property values that, especially residential, that it deteriorated a little bit. Houses don't sell as fast as they did. You know, and things, but that can happen, we have seen it, which affects assessed valuation, which affects the tax rate and that, but hey, we've had a discussion here, we can move on.
Checking on the internet real quick, the average interest rate when we financed this building overall, probably not the bond, but like we were talking about, it was 1.35%. So I mean, that's a big difference from where we're at right now. Fed rate is five and a half. Actually, five and three quarters.
When we financed the jail, it was three, yes.
The rates were much higher than that too, we thought we were looking at five.
So anything else, Chad?
No.
Anything on the jail construction, anything unusual or that?
Well, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, I think you were there, so you would probably know better than me.
They didn't indicate anything. Everything's moving along, sounds like they may even be a little ahead of schedule until something doesn't arrive.
They did have to treat the soil, right?
Yeah, we did, yeah, we did line stabilization on the soil. That was a, a difficult decision to make and one that, you know, I think we asked multiple times, what if we, what if we don't? And of course, that would stop the project, we'd still be paying our monthly contractual agreement to YGAND, but. There wouldn't be any work completed, so at the end of the day, the economics was that it was more cost effective to do the line stabilization and keep the project moving forward. Line stabilization is very expensive, but we used funds from the contingencies, which is still very healthy. You know, we've spent somewhere around 400,000 from contingencies, which leaves a remainder of, I believe, 1.4, 1.5 million in contingencies. I mean, Jason, maybe you can correct me. There 1.2, 1.4 in contingencies, which we're watching very closely, that's built into that guaranteed maximum price and the owner's, and the owner's cost.
I thought, I mean, that would have been part of the testing down in DeBor.
Well, the ground was saturated because of heavy rains in the spring.
Okay.
And, you know, they could have just kept turning it over and letting it dry out, but then you run the risk of another rain.
Okay.
And.
So.
I mean, Rob, Rob Schuman had made the point, like, why don't we just wait a couple of months and, and we looked into that, but.
So the ground was suitable, but it just, so what, when they started, they had to put the linemen to dry it up to get it firm.
Yeah, the ground was saturated like eight inches.
Okay.
Okay, are we still on budget?
Yeah, we're still on budget, I know there, there was misinformation shared yesterday that we're a million dollars over budget, which is not true. We have that guaranteed maximum price from YGAND and I'll just pull that up really quick, just to remind everyone. The contract amount with YGAND is 34,884,376. And then when you add in the owner's costs, it's 37,973,585. And that includes those contingencies in that budget, so.
And if we don't use those contingencies, it must come back to the county then?
Yeah, oh yeah, they do, that was something, that was one of the main reasons why we selected YGAND over Garmont for construction manager, because YGAND had promised that contingencies would come back to the county, whereas. Garmont wanted to use that as an incentive to keep costs low and they would have kept them.
Okay, anything else on the deal for Chad? Anything? Anything else?
No.
Okay. I do have a couple sets of minutes. First one is June 28th, our executive session. A motion to approve June 28th. Minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Tom, a second by Kim, that we approve June 28th minutes, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, all those opposed, say. Then the next one is June, July 5th minutes.
A motion to accept those minutes.
A motion by Nick. To approve July 5th, any, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kim. Any further discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand, all those opposed, say.
Say.
Absent say, and Tom and John abstain, they were gone. Any comments from the public? Scott?
Just real quick, this is a topic that I've talked with Tiffany about a couple of times, about using the courthouse and Thomas Marshall Building as a 501(c)(3) organization. Making them a nonprofit, which means that we can fundraise for those things, but then invest that money into stock market, the bonds, whatever you want to do. And then lease those buildings back to the county for a dollar a year. And your, your officials would be appointing those people on those boards. So I don't know if that's an idea that I could look into for you and get those facts and see if that's something, I know other jurisdictions have done that. Where they took historical buildings that was qualified under that premise. And that way, there could be extra funds put into account that would help supplement those repairs.
And you're really voluntary to take on all the grant writing and everything that goes along with that?
Getting the facts for you so that if people want to move forward with that, that would be something I think would help. But we, Tiffany, I've talked about for probably two years, we've seen other jurisdictions do that, obviously it's an older building, it's going to continue to need hundreds of thousands of repairs. But if we can fundraise for it, which you can't now. But if we can fundraise for it, that means anybody in the world, you go on the internet and go to the page and. Get money for that. We got economic vitality in the county that would like to see that circle building stay there, they might be able to contribute money as well. Goes into a fund, could even have somebody like another funding organization, like Good Foundation or somebody else, hold those funds, make those payments appear, even if it was 20, 30,000 dollars, that's something. So I didn't know if that was something that you'd be interested in, commissioners would, will be to spend time looking at that.
It's a great idea, I think it's a great idea that you're volunteering to look into and gather information, I'd say.
It's a huge endeavor.
Go for it.
Is this including the historical museums running?
So it would be the, the structure and operating costs for any of the buildings, so.
Employees, you would take over the entire.
No, it would just be for the structure itself and maintenance of that facility. The county employees would still be your employees, they'd fund to go there, but this would be for maintenance and structural, maybe utilities. Just not look into it, that you'd be willing to, let me do that.
It's a great idea, I've been saying it for years.
I guess, yes.
Okay, thank you.
This won't interfere with any of the other work you've got to do, will it?
No, sir, I will, I will make sure I go.
This won't fall into overtime.
I'll not get overtime, okay, thanks.
Pro bono.
Anything else? Yes, Kim?
On the tax levy, that was a two line item there and it kind of sounds like the maximum levy amount got thrown in with one most, we imagine, that's it, so I'll leave it on that.
Yeah, that's kind of what we did on that.
So that's all in with the certain part as well?
Right, yeah.
Okay, and, and no change on that? And, and no change on that?
You're okay with that?
Yeah. I just want to make sure that that was in with the circuit breaker part when we were discussing that. Okay.
Hey, thank you. Anything else? Meeting adjourned.
Oh, hold on. Hold on. So on behalf of the broadband committee, I wanted to talk real quick about the speed test. So what we're asking is, on the county website, if everybody goes to the county website, there is a link where you can take the speed test. And our, our consultant, Sand, Sand, Sanders, Grant, Sand, Sands Strategies has created a QR code. And, excuse me, if we can get everybody to do this speed test, we can show the state that there's real need within the county for the, the grants and all the opportunistic money that we can get from the state. So if, if people can go, and I can, I think Dale can make this available in the EDC. If anybody wants to swing by and grab a, a copy, you can scan the QR code and it'll take you right to where you need to be. So I got.
Good. Any other report on the committee?
Uh, moving forward, I think he and his assistant are setting up interviews with a couple of the local news outlets. I believe one of them's out of Fort Wayne and then KPC Media Group. I believe they're going to do a spot in the paper. I think that's right, right? Yes. So it's moving along. We're getting there.
Good. Okay. Have a good day, everyone. Take a little break, then we'll get into our budgets.